Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Before we go any further on the agenda, I just want to do a notice of Zoom information. Anyone wishing to call into Zoom, the call-in number is 1-669-900-9128. And the meeting ID for this meeting is 842-7265-9406. Note this option will require a computer with audio and visual capabilities. Alternatively, you can join by telephone by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and entering the meeting ID. Thank you. Moving forward, if we could get a roll call to determine a quorum, please?
Yes. Larry Chesney.
Present.
Sarah Chavilcek.
Present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Larry Payton.
Present.
Pat Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Payton, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could get the ethics law read into the minutes, please?
Thank you. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here today, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duffson. Secretary Lloyd, if we could have the appeals procedure, please?
Yes. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. At this point, we are opening public comment. Must remind everyone that comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the agenda. However, action may not be taken on any matter raised during this public comment period until the matter is specifically listed on the agenda as an action item. Comments are to be made to the Planning Commission as a whole. Lacy, do we have any public comment either in chambers or on Zoom?
I too have one registered in chambers.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pam Roberts. I'm a resident of the Warm Springs, a specific plan area, also known as Palomino Valley. I am here on Agenda Item 8E, the application submitted by Palomino Farms LLC, which seeks to essentially relocate commercial acreage within the, what we call the SPA, specific plan area, to land adjacent to the Pyramid Highway near Whiskey Springs. I'm not asking this body to either approve or deny the application, rather I'm asking you to postpone making a decision for two reasons. First of all, the Warm Springs specific plan area is currently under review, and the community still has not really been invited to participate in that review. Tamwa and the Water Feasibility Project, which is very much connected to this application and is mentioned in the application, is still not finished, and both of these aspects, I believe, have an impact on your decision today, if you were to make one today. Second, I don't believe the applicant has adequately sought public input. I realize this is a procedure, they were supposed, you know, we have this new neighborhood meeting procedure, they sent it to 30 people or 30 property owners. I think that's a weak attempt. Yesterday, I posted a poll on Nextdoor, just one day, asking whether folks wanted a commercial strip near Whiskey Springs. Fifty-seven votes. Seventy-seven percent said no, 23% said yes. Frankly, I was surprised by their responses. Like I said, I'm not taking a position yes or no. I just, I want this body to understand that there's more people that live out there that care about the decision that you're going to make today. I sent an email to the applicant on January 4th, 2022, after having a meeting with the applicant. And another, my wife, who is a retired federal auditor, and myself are retired attorney, were probably a little bit more than they could handle in that meeting, I don't know. But anyway, we had a pretty good meeting, I thought, and I sent an email asking some more questions and raising some concerns that I had after a meeting with them. I received no answer, no email, and I didn't receive an invitation to that neighborhood meeting. You would think that someone was as interested as I was, and there were some other people that we would have been invited to that neighborhood meeting. We weren't. So I have some problems with that, and that's why I'm asking you to delay making a decision. Obviously, hear the presentation, but I really encourage you to wait until you get more input from people. I mean, there's like over 1,000 people that live in the Palomino Valley area. It's rural. There's no commercial buildings, there's no, along that way, there's no 7-Eleven, there's nothing like that except for the Equestrian Center, I guess you could call that commercial. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised via Zoom.
All right. Thank you very much. Then we will...
Oh, I apologize. I have one hand raised via Zoom. Debbie, I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Strusacker, and I am offering comments on the Agenda Item pertaining to the ridges at Hunter Creek Phase 2 Special Use Permit. Wanted just to make sure that the commission considers putting in adequate dust control measures and enforcement measures, not just during the construction period for the 50-some-odd lots that are going to be cleared and graded, but also, once those lots are cleared, they will continue to be a source of fugitive emissions if there aren't proper dust suppression measures taken to control dust from those lots during windy periods. And those measures could include putting surfactant, an EPA-approved dust suppressant on the lots, revegetating them, mulching them, gravelling them, but I live nearby, and I'm concerned that once those lots are all cleared, that they will be a source of periodic dust emissions that won't be adequately controlled. So I would thank you for your consideration on that and ask you to put some special stipulations in the Special Use Permit that specify that the dust control requirements and Washoe County's fugitive dust emission limits apply not just while the active equipment is on-site, but afterwards as well. Also want to make sure that during construction, you know, we have wildfire risks are very high, so that there are proper safety considerations, that there will not be, that in the event there's a spark created by the construction material, that the builder will have adequate water facilities to be able to put out any fires immediately, and that perhaps you consider limiting the time of operation for those construction activities. When we have extreme wind conditions, my suggestion would be that there would be a prohibition against using that heavy equipment during those very fire-prone windy days, which we certainly get. And also, want to make sure that there's adequate stormwater drainage for those lots. We know that we get some pretty big floods here from time to time, and want to make sure that the engineering and grading plan is adequate. So appreciate your taking these comments very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Debbie. I have another hand raised via Zoom. I don't have a name, 2189. I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Hi. This is Eric Strusacker. I also live in Eagles Nest and have the same concerns regarding the ridges at Hunter Creek. I think Debbie covered those issues adequately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no further hands raised.
Hearing no more public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board, the commission, for Item 6, Approval of the June 7th, 2022 Agenda.
Commissioner Doncic, Chair Doncic, move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Vice Chair Chavilcek, a second. Do we have a second on that?
Commissioner Chesney, second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that one of the items has been requested to be postponed, I believe, Item 8A, the West Abandonment, and if the board would like, this would be an appropriate time to do that postponement on the agenda.
Okay, even though it says postponed?
On the agenda already.
Okay.
Okay.
So amend my motion to include that Item 8A is postponed.
Thank you.
The second as well.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the tonight's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next on the agenda is Item 7, Approval of the May 3rd, 2022 Draft Minutes. And of course, Commissioners may identify any additions or corrections to the draft minutes as transcribed. Do we have a motion for approval?
Commissioner Chesney, move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Payton, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. We have first and a second. Motion for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we move on into public hearings, and as we all know, Item 8A has been postponed. So we move on to Item 8B. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read this, read it into the minutes, please?
We'll do. Yes, this is abandonment case number WAB 220007, for Class and Quality Chocolate, the abandonment, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment and reoffer of dedication of a portion of Haco Court and public utility easement, plowed snow storage easement, and traffic control signage easements. The proposed dedication would relocate the cul-de-sac and utilities. The total area of the right-of-way to be abandoned is 29,209 square feet, and the total square footage of the PUE, PSE, and TSE easements to be abandoned is 10,008 square feet. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Chris Bronzick.
Thank you, Chris. Before we get started, I want to ask if there's any disclosures by Commissioners, either ethics or ex parte for this item? Hearing none. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening. Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning. We are looking at WAB 22-7. This is Class and Quality Chocolate abandonment. So provided a satellite overview of Class and Chocolate. This site previously was five total parcels. It is now, have gone through the process of a reversion to acreage, and now consists of one parcel. It's located at 200 Haco Court. And so, as mentioned, when they did submit this abandonment project, it did contain five total parcels, and the original APNs that were submitted are listed above. As that reversion to acreage went through, the existing APNs disappeared and a new APN was provided. The new acreage for this parcel is 75.42 acres. The parcel is located in the Spanish Springs Business Park, off of Pyramid Highway and Ingenuity Avenue, and directly off of Haco Court. So the request is for an abandonment and a reoffer of dedication of a portion of Haco Court, and the 10-foot wide strip containing the PUE, Public Utility Easement, Plowed Snow Storage, and Traffic Control Signage easements. The total area that's to be abandoned is 10,008 square feet, and they are also proposing to abandon Haco Court, the right-of-way itself, which totals 29,209 square feet. As part of the rededication or the reoffer, it will relocate or shorten that Haco Court, and all the utilities that are being abandoned would also be relocated around that new cul-de-sac. So you can see what's happening here with the two site plans. To the left, you'll see the current existing way the Haco Court exists with the abandonments proposed, and on the right side, you'll see what's offered as rededication. This cul-de-sac and everything that is being reduced or abandoned and reoffered is located entirely within Class and Chocolate's property line, or property boundaries. So access for the properties utilizing Haco Court will not change. The portions of Haco Court and the utilities to be abandoned, again, are surrounded entirely by Class and Chocolate's properties. So I've provided a sheet of the reviewing agencies that did look at this abandonment. This was sent to 16 agencies, and four of those agencies did provide conditions, which can be found in Exhibit A of the staff report. Public notice, so staff sent 29 notices to the surrounding parcels that could be impacted by this abandonment. Staff is able to make all three required findings, as is required with the abandonment request. Those findings are master plan, no detriment, and existing easements. And staff is recommending approval with conditions. I've provided a motion above, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have a applicant presentation tonight with this, or is it just...
We do not have an applicant presentation, but the property owner is present to answer any questions.
Okay. At this point, we can open this to, is there any public comment, Lacy, on this item?
I have no public comment registered in chambers, and I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. At this point, we open up to the commission for questions of staff, the applicant, if there are any. Hearing none. At this point, we can close public hearing and call it back for optional for discussion or a call for a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I move that after given reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public comment hearing, excuse me, public hearing, Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 22-0007 for Class and Quality Chocolate, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second?
Madam Doncic, Commissioner Payton, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We move on to Item 8C. If you could, Secretary Lloyd, please?
Yes, this is abandonment case number WAB 220008 for the Eclipse Drive abandonment, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve the abandonment of Washoe County's interest in a 50-foot wide undeveloped roadway and drainage easement between 19 Eclipse Drive and 25 Eclipse Drive. If approved, the easement will be abandoned equally, with 25 feet to each of the abutting property owners. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Julie Olander.
Thank you, Trevor. And Ms. Julie, one moment, just a quick question, of course, to ask Commissioners if there are any disclosures, either ethics or ex parte on this item? Hearing none, we move on. We're opening public hearing. Thank you, Julie.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Julie Olander of Washoe County Planning and Building, and this is an abandonment case for Eclipse Drive, and the request is to abandon a 50-foot wide undeveloped roadway and drainage easement between 19 and 25 Eclipse Drive. It's approximately, if approved, the abandoned area, which is 25 feet, would go to each property. So here's a diagram showing that. So each property owner would get the 25 feet of the 50-foot easement. The easement was created in approximately, in June 24, 1992, per a tract map, and it was created to provide an easement for drainage and roadway, and the roadway was to connect to the properties to the north and also address drainage issues in the area. However, Eagle Canyon has now come in, and you can see where that easement is. Eagle Canyon has come into the north and has addressed the roadway, the need or the lack of the need of our access to that area to the north because of how they laid their development out, that roadway is no longer needed. And they've also pretty much addressed the need for any kind of drainage issues in the AT&amp;T did review this application, has asked, and it's in your conditions of approval. I just wanted to point out where this was. They've asked to maintain the seven-and-a-half-foot easement along the roadway in front of the properties, and that's part, one of the conditions of approval. Abutting properties were noticed, and no phone calls or emails were received. The application was distributed to various agencies and departments, and the agencies and departments that had conditions are included in your conditions of approval. Staff is able to make all the findings, and I offer a possible motion. The applicant is available for questions, if you have any for her.
Thank you, Julie. At this point, Lacy, is there any public comment, either in chambers or...
I have no one registered in chambers, and no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Then I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Our, to the Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or applicant at this Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and call for either a call for discussion or a motion?
Chair Doncic?
Yes, Commissioner Payton.
I move that after given reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 22-0008 for Steve and Amanda Duncan and Ed and Sherry Kopke, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Chesney, seconds.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Secretary Lloyd, if you could read Item 8D, please?
Certainly. This is Amendment of Conditions, Case Number WAC 220001, and Special Use Permit, Case Number WSUP 220002, the ridges at Hunter Creek, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an amendment of conditions of tentative subdivision map, Case Number TM 16005, to allow a new and different lot configur- map case number TM sixteen zero-zero-five, to allow a new and different lot configuration to add a guardhouse and to add a clubhouse as a common area amenity, and to approve a special use permit for major grading, including approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand four-hundred cubic yards of excavation to include approximately ninety-three-thousand four-hundred cubic yards of import material and approximately two-million-twenty-six-thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety square feet of surface disturbance. As part of the special use permit, the applicant is asking to various, several sections of Washoe County Code, Chapter one-ten, Article four-thirty-eight, specifically Sections one-ten, four-thirty-eight, forty-five A, B, C, and J, as well as one-ten, four-thirty-eight, fifty A. Once again, representing Washoe County in this matter is staff planner Julie Olander.
Thank you, Julie. Once again, I need to ask commissioners at this time if they have any either disclosures, either ethics or ex parte for this item. Hearing none, thank you, Julie.
Julie Olander with Planning and Building, again. As Mr. Lloyd read off this whole request, again, I'm not going to bother you with "again", but there's a significant request here. And just to show you where the location of these properties are, it's off of Woodchuck, which is over in the, sort of the western part of the county. So as, I just want to give you a little bit of background on this property. So there's been two tentative maps that have been approved on the property. The first one was TM zero-five thirteen for Hunter Creek Development, and it's been referred to as Phase One, and you might have seen that language. And it was for fifty-three lot, open space tentative subdivision on approximately thirty-four acres for twenty lots, and twenty lots for recorder, recorded. However, one lot was, one lot was included in the next development of this area, which is TM sixteen zero-zero-five, and that is ridges at Hunter Creek or Phase Two. And this one lot that was in the original tentative map was pulled into the, into the next, the next tentative map. So there's a little bit changing of the lot sizes, I mean, the number of lots, however, they basically are coming out with seventy-two lots. And I just want to show you a picture here. I apologize, so the typo should be TM sixteen zero-zero-six. So where the yellow is, that was one lot in the original tentative subdivision for that area. And then that, that area was created, five lots were created out of that one lot that was in the original approval. And then you can see the layout of the other, of the other proposed lots in TM sixteen zero-zero-six. So there were a total of seventy-two lots, nineteen from the original one and then fifty-three from the second tentative map. The developer in the TM sixteen zero-zero-five was going to pay, was, the proposal was to pave the roads, provide storm drainage areas, and improve just the utilities primarily. However, they were not going to do anything to the lots individually. That was going to be done by the individual lot property owners. They also graded for a loop road, which would provide access to the water tank that's there. So the applicant has now come in with modification to modify the lot lines to address the grading on the, the location of the lots. They've also identified a location for a guardhouse and for a community center. The community center is going to be about, is thirty thousand square feet, and it's going to include, it's going to be where three lots previously were. And so there's some grading involved in that, too. Here's sort of a layout. You can sort of see the water tank to the left, and then the next set of colorful areas is that community center, community center. And you can see where the lots are being laid out. So to make all this, these changes that they wanted to do to, to move the lot lines, they had to apply for a special use permit for the grading that was going to occur. So they're proposing to import ninety-three, ninety-three-thousand four-hundred cubic yards, and then there's an addition of one-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-four-hundred-thousand cubic yards that would be excavated for the site for a total of two-million square feet of the site that's going to be disturbed. And again, this is, as I said, the original tentative map was just for grading for the roadways, the storm drains. Now they're coming in to degrade for the individual lots themselves, so that those, those pads will be set up. The applicant has indicated that these changes will limit this disturbance to the overall site, will limit onsite grading to one operation, and will allow the grading to occur as one operation. And the lots will be, will better fit with the natural contour of the area. And this matches up with the Southwest Truckee Meadows Area Plan, which states, "When feasible, grading shall complement the original contours of the landscaping and minimize disturbance of the natural topography." Oops. So to do this grading, they're asking for some modifications. So to get these lots laid out the way they want to do, it just, they're requiring the special use permit for the, for the grading, but they're also asking to modify what's required with the grading. So there's five modifications. The first one is, speaks to, is four-thirty-eight, forty-five A, which speaks to the slope, which is typically required to be three-to-one. However, the applicant indicates the two-to-one slopes are needed to minimize the disturbance and the impacts on the adjacent properties, and that the two-to-one slopes will reduce the overall grading and scarring of the site. They are proposing to put interred rockery walls that will be located in some areas to limit the scarring, and the walls will not be over six feet in height, and will typically be at the back of the lot, so they won't be as visible to, from the street. They have identified these locations, and here you can see the lots where these, the two-to-one slope will occur versus the three-to-one. Too hard, heavy of my finger. The second modification is requiring, is concerning the required front yard setbacks shall not differ from the natural or existing grade by more than forty-eight inches. And again, the applicant's indicated that the grading will be done over the whole site and not pieced together. So this kind of grading is not going to be addressing the forty-eight inches in each individual lot. And then again, this grading will allow the slopes and drainage facilities work better on the lots. And again, they've identified those locations of where that will happen on those lots. They will have, it'll be over forty-eight inches. The third modification is the finished grade shall not vary from the natural slope by more than ten feet in elevation. And again, the applicant has indicated, because the topography of the site, that there will be sites, areas that will have a variation of more than ten feet from the existing ground. And again, they have identified those. And you can see where the, there are fills and then there are cuts. And the cuts are the red ones and the fills are green. So those areas, there will be, it'll be a change of ten feet, of more than ten feet, which is, we need to modify because the code does not allow that. The fourth one is to ensure that any cuts is made for a structural pad that exposes the cut shall not exceed the height of the structure. Again, we have the topography issue, the challenges there, and they're indicating that the masquerade design has, it will incorporate steps, stepped pads and walls to reduce the cuts of the, of the slope behind the pads. And they further state that typically the height of a building is twenty feet, and there will be areas, again, where the cut slope will exceed that building height. And again, they've identified those locations. So again, you can see where those, those lots are. The final modification is concerning riprap, and they're indicating that they will need riprap. Typically, we just see riprap in drainage ways. However, they're asking for, to be, have riprap in certain locations because of the topography and that it will more, it will be a better mechanism to stabilize the slope. They are saying that they will backfill the riprap with soil and vegetation, so it'll look like natural slope and will, but will provide that stabilization that is needed. The applicant did hel, hold a neighborhood meeting on May ninth at Roygum School. There were approximately fifteen people there. The applicant gave a fairly good presentation showing various maps of the area and photo simulations of several locations, what the properties would look like with houses on it to the adjacent properties. Some of the questions included were access, emergency access to the site, mail delivery, fire and desk control, and construction hours. Property owners within five-hundred feet of the site were low, were noticed, and that was approximately seventy-two parcels. The applicant was sent out to various agencies and departments, and they, those agencies with conditions are included in the conditions of approval. Staff, and I just want to speak that, there was a comment early on about desk control. There is a condition there from air quality concerning desk control. And just so you understand, that this tentative map already had conditions on it. So they have the original conditions, and then they, we've added some additional conditions to address some of the, the changes they're adding because of the special use permit and just some of more updated language. And again, so that, those are new conditions of approval. Staff is able to make all the findings, and they're explained in the staff report, and I provide a possible motion for the amendments of the conditions and then also for a special use permit. The applicant is here and she does have, they do have a presentation also.
All right, thank you. The applicant would like to come forward.
Stacy Huggins, for the record, thank you for pulling up my PowerPoint. On behalf of the applicant, New Age Living, I just want to start off by saying Julie did a great job summarizing the project. I do have several slides, so I'll try to briefly talk on the ones that she already touched on, so I don't repeat the information. You already know where this site is located. Looking at the overall project site, this is a site that encompasses a hundred-and-sixty-two acres total. You can see the zoning is a mix where the lots have been approved previously. That zoning consists of HDR, LDS, and GR. The lot sizes that you see on this map that have been approved with Phase One and Phase Two are consistent with the LDS, the Low Density Suburban zoning standards. So what that really means is the front and rears have a thirty-foot setback and the side yards are twelve. Just real quick to touch on those previous approvals that Julie had mentioned, this is showing the Phase One tentative map. Again, as Julie mentioned, that was originally approved with fifty-three lots. There were nineteen lots recorded to date. The remaining lots expired, so that Phase One is now recorded with nineteen lots. That approval did not include grading for the lots. It, again, only grading for the roads and the infrastructure. Same situation with what Julie referred to as Phase Two, approved in July of twenty-sixteen. That was fifty-three lots, as you see presented in the graphic on the bottom. There are currently twenty-one lots pending recordation on that tentative map. The rest are being, I'll show you a little bit, being modified, hopefully through this condition amendment. Again, grading only for the roads and the infrastructure, not the lots, but everything you see here, again, would be consistent with that Low Density Suburban zoning designation. So, two requests, as Julie mentioned. The first one I'll touch on is Amendment of Condition one A. And the real reason that triggers or meets the requirement for a condition amendment is substantial conformance with the original plan. So the original plan had lots. What we think we're doing now is aligning those lots to better work with the topography and actually take the topography into consideration very seriously. So in addition to the lot lines adjusting to work with the topography and ultimately reduce disturbance on this site, the applicant is also proposing to provide a clubhouse. And I don't know if there's a pointer, but in, is this a pointer? Maybe? I don't know if you guys, oh, you can't see that. Where those three lots, I'll just verbally talk through it. Where the three lots are, on the left side or the west, southwest boundary there, those three lots have been repositioned to the south side of the loop road. They would be lots, oh, thank you very much. It's forty-three and forty-four on the bottom there. So those three lots have been absorbed over there, and the clubhouse will replace those. Also with the relotting, I noted on the southwest or the southeast corner there, we were able to reduce the three lots abutting Eagles Nest down to two lots, which, again, really takes into consideration the topography on the site. So the other request, again, as Julie mentioned, was the special use permit for masquerading. This is really to address specifically the lots, and it is intended to really define building envelopes for each of these parcels, so that as people buy these parcels, they know where they can build within a parcel. And it takes into consideration that topography. It will allow the developer to reduce the impact in the neighborhoods long-term by having less trucks coming and going. One of the opportunities with this approach is that if one lot needs fill and another lot needs to be exported, that can happen as this grading operation is occurring in all one effort. So that's really why the developer is coming forward now and asking for this special use permit for masquerading. I just want to point out that, I mentioned earlier that the total site was a hundred-and-sixty-two acres. This project is really only disturbing twenty-eight percent of the site. So it sounds like a lot when we talk about two-million square feet of disturbed area, but it's twenty-eight percent of the total site. There's quite a bit of this property that's being preserved as open space. Looking at the cuts and fills, as Julie mentioned, we are asking for a deviation to address cuts and fills on the site. The pad grading has been designed to be stepped and sloped to reduce the cuts and fills as much as we can. But again, based on the topography, that's a bit of a challenge. Where we do disturb those slopes, the cuts and fill areas, they will be revegetated or landscaped with formal landscaping. Again, that, that one grading operation allows us to really mitigate the cuts and fills and reduce the impact. To the conversation or comment regarding dust control and wind, we know and understand that there are standards and we will meet them for dust and wind as a part of these grading exercises. I want to talk just really quickly about some adjacency issues or concerns that have been brought up. Where this project directly abuts Eagles Nest, and there are currently a couple of built homes on that shared property line. You can see we have pulled the grading back, and so that would be lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine, just to be clear. We've pulled the grading back, so the grading meets the thirty-foot building setback that's required in the zoning designation. But the building pad itself, and I'm going to go one further, the building pad itself, particularly on lot twenty-nine, that would be in that image on the left, the bottom parcel is approximately fifty feet from the property line. So there's an additional building envelope setback on that property. And then on the northern property, parcel twenty-eight, the building envelope is setback from the property line, I'm sorry, I can't read that up there. I think it says fifty feet as well. Looking at that graphic, I know you guys can't see that number, but what I want to make clear on lot twenty-eight, the separation between the setback on parcel oh-nine and the building envelope on future parcel twenty-eight is approximately eighty-four feet of separation. And on parcel oh-one and future parcel twenty-nine, the separation is approximately seventy feet. Another deviation, as Julie mentioned, was the two-to-one slopes, and I just want to touch on this briefly. Again, the two-to-one slope is intended to minimize the disturbance area. You can see we really tried to meet three-to-one as much as we could, but trying to meet three-to-one on some of those slopes created more slope area, more disturbed area. The two-to-one slopes allows us to utilize walls and reduce that disturbed area overall. So just really quick, we had, as Julie mentioned, we have previously prepared some photo renderings. We looked specifically where the project posed some discussion along the shared property line at Eagles Nest. So this is just an aerial image of what we anticipate the project could look like. Looking at the photo renderings, we took three photos, as you can see on this exhibit. I'm going to start with photo location one, which is from the cul-de-sac at Sharps Lane. So this is the current image, standing in that cul-de-sac at Sharps Lane, looking to the west at what would be parcel twenty-eight. This is what we This is what we anticipate the parcel looking like when a house is developed on this property. This house represents what the developer is anticipating for this. This is a no more than 35-foot tall house. It's most likely a one-and-a-half-story building with the bottom floor into, cut into the grade. So it's a walk-in, walk-out type of situation. The next photo, photo location number two, is just a little further south along the shared property line. And so this is what that property or that photo looks like now from the property line. And this is what we anticipate the property owner view looking like when that property is developed. Again, that house meets the county codes for the Low Density Suburban standards. And the final location, we wanted to look at where the emergency access road is. And so this image shows what it looks like currently, looking up the emergency access road, which was actually a condition of approval as part of the original tentative map. So we will obviously meet that condition and perpetuate what is required under that tentative map. So this is what we anticipate the project looking like along that emergency access road, looking to the west when the lots are all developed. Staff mentioned that they were recommending approval with conditions. We've read the staff report and we agree with all of the conditions, including the conditions that were on the original tentative map. And I just want to close by saying, the applicant really takes the concerns of the residents and the conditions that are required and the requirements in code very seriously. And so I just want to reiterate that we will meet all of the county standards for dust control and wind measures and any fire issues that may come up. And we'll, so we will meet any county or state requirements that, you know, may be imposed on this project. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions. Our project engineer is also here if you have any technical questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for either staff or the applicant at this Hearing none, I open up, do we have any public comment at this time? Either in chambers or via Zoom?
We do. First up in chambers, I have Tom Hall, followed by Jordan Graham. And I would just like to point out to the commissioners, the first two gentlemen have pictures and they were in the order that I handed them out.
Commissioners, good evening to you. I'm Tom Hall. My wife Peggy Hall is up in the backseat there. We built a house at 4725 Wood Truck Circle. And when we built the house, we were the first house in that area. We didn't have any experience with excess traffic or dust or anything. We actually had a fire on our property because they were building a fire lane and scraped a rock and started a fire, so 60 acres burned. So we're kind of concerned about that. The thing I want to talk about was the traffic. I handed out a photo, I hope everyone has a copy, but there's a trailhead, Michael J. Thompson Trailhead. Actually, David Thompson is here, the father of the person that was named, Michael J. And it turns out this trailhead is extremely popular, unbelievable traffic, morning, night, noon, and even at night, late nights. And what happens is that the traffic comes into the trailhead and they park, fill up all the parking spots in the trail, trailhead, the parking lots that are provided by the county, but then they park each side of the road. And this is a shot I took just two days ago. So the weekends are particularly bad, but this is a weekday. And it shows some of the construction equipment that's there. Three, three houses are under construction on our road. And I was amazed when we moved into our house and were there peacefully and very quiet and then the construction started and all of a sudden there's trucks, transports, delivery equipment, all hours of day and night. And so I did ask if there was a restriction on the construction hours, and I understand there is a code section on that, is that correct? From 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM or something like that. But in any event, so that might help. There is a giant bottleneck that's going to happen, particularly when you have 72 new homes up on the top. And I don't quite know what the solution is. I've talked to the developer and representatives. I don't know what the solution is, but I do think someone ought to talk about how to control the volume of and timing of the traffic. So access is an issue. We did have a concern about mail, and there's a provision in one of the tentative maps that had to have an agreement with the U.S. Postal Service. And actually, I wrote a couple of letters and they actually started delivering mail to our box Monday. So that one went away. One of the success, a little W on the side, a little W over here. So I don't know what the solutions are to those concerns, but I do think as this project goes forward and gets built out, you're going to hear, somebody's going to hear complaints about the dust, the traffic and access. So I just want to put our comments on the record and appreciate any comments you can, or help you can make to us.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I have Jordan Graham.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm wearing two hats today. One is as a homeowner of the property that's immediately adjacent to Lot 29 that Stacy just walked through, talking about the issues with respect to lot setback. And I'll refer you to, just so you have a frame of reference, if you go to the handout that I think I provided you, if you go to page two, and you look at where it says Lot 29, and then you see the parcel that says Graham, Jordan, it's 01. Today I met with, it was very kind of actually, the development team coming out to my house because one of the major concerns I have on my property is that the, given the, the location of the pad, as you see on Lot 29, even at a 50-foot setback, if that house were to be a two-and-a-half-story house, which legally they could build, they would be looking directly down into the back of my house. And as you know, Eagles Nest is a series of high-end homes. Part of the design guideline for Eagles Nest was to build homes that both respected privacy of one another within the HOA and also preserved views. And the idea of having a large home sitting there looking right out, down into the back of my house was something I was very concerned about. Anyway, the development team came out to the house today and we walked the property behind, on Lot 29. We talked about the potential for moving the pad, which is in the plan right now as specified, to another location. And they said that they would be willing to reexamine that as we go forward. So that's, I want to put that on the record. The second part to this is, if we go back to the first page, and I think Ms. Strusaker and the comment, the public comments made some comments about dust control concerns as well as water. And as you can see in this, this depiction on the first page, Eagles Nest is directly downstream, downhill, from, down in the valley, from the ridges at Hunter Creek. And obviously, there's a major concern from a health perspective because there were members of the community that expressed concern about the dust and their chronic healthcare conditions that they could be affected. So we're encouraged by the comments that the development team had with respect to trying to do something about that and hope that that will be mitigated. But major concern for the residents of the HOA. If you go to the third page, the other concern within the HOA, and again, I'm wearing the HOA Board Director hat here, is that many residents within Eagles Nest have had both surface and subsurface water issues, with water coming down through the canyon and into the properties there. And what you see denoted on this, on the third page here, are the lots, when we sent out an email message to all the residents, these are the lots that responded and said that they had either surface or subsurface water problems. So water drainage is a major concern there too. And I think Ms. Strusaker earlier mentioned that some potential mitigation is planned, and I think-
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Richard, three minutes are up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Cindy Carano registered. She did not wish to speak, but just indicated she was in favor of the project.
Thank you, Lacy. Any other public comment?
No further public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much. And at that point, if there's no more public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either staff or the applicant at this
Chair Doncheck?
Yes, Vice-Chair Chesea.
This would be for staff. I'm looking at the statements of condition regarding from Park Planner, and there was no mention of overflow traffic for a trail access. Have you had any conversation with Sophia on that or anybody in parks?
Julia Olander, for the record. Yes, I have. I did speak to Sophia about that, and they do, they're very much aware of the parking issue there. It's sort of more, made more challenging by a lot of the construction that's going on up there because there's construction vehicles parked along the roadway and equipment. So that makes it a little more challenging. But it has become very popular. I'm not sure, they have had some conversations with the federal government forestry because they have some property there, but it's a very steep slope. So I'm not sure quite where they're going to go with, where they're going to add more parking, but it is a challenging site for all the parking. I think they're trying to encourage people to walk in more often if they can. But again, the parking is at the trailhead and there's really no parking down towards Plateau either. So it's a known fact. I think one of the things that we're sort of feeling this project will sort of address is they're not going to be having people come up in, at different stages, like you build your lot and then six months later, another person comes and builds their lot. So this will help at least with the traffic coming in to grade the area. And there is a condition from engineering that they have to provide information on, on the hall road, I think it's what it's called by engineering. They have a condition in there. But no, it's become almost too popular. So we need to be sending people elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, though.
Julie, one question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just clarification. Because I know they were talking about, just to get on the record, I know they were talking about water issues. And in generally, this, we aren't at a tentative map plan, but usually when they do build, part of those restrictions and conditions are, they can't have any more water come off than what comes off now. So I truly believe that that should probably be a normally controlled condition when they go to build.
Correct. And those tentative, the conditions from the original tentative map have no address any kind of drainage issues. So there's nothing in the new conditions of approval, but like I said earlier, the old conditions are carried on. We've just added some new ones on to address primarily the grading that's being proposed.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioners, any other further questions? Hearing none, I will close public hearing and bringing it back to Commissioners for discussion or a call for a motion or motions?
Commissioner Doncheck.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve amendment and conditions, case number WAC 22-0001 for Kaya Aura LLC to amend the tentative map previously approved and TM 16-005 ridges at Hunter Creek along with the amended conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all 10 findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.608.25.
And asking councils, should we do both at the same time or should we do them separately?
It's a serious question.
Okay. In addition, special use permit motion. I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approves special use permit case number WSUP 22-0007 for Kaya Aura LLC with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.810.30 and approve the applicant's request to vary the grading standard set forth in Washoe County Section 110.438.45 per N.A., per N.B., per N.C., and per N.I. And 110-3-
It's J.
It's hard to see, but it's J.
Yeah. Amendment 110.348.50 per N.A., as set forth in the staff report.
Do we have a second in that motion?
Commissioner Doncheck, Commissioner Payton for a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Secretary Lloyd, we move on to item 8E, if you would please.
This may involve a good deal of reading, but I'll go ahead and get started. It's for a request for master plan amendment, case number WMPA 22-0002, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to adopt a resolution amending the Washoe County Master Plan Warm Springs area plan and the Warm Springs specific plan to reconfigure and adjust the master plan category on several parcels of land from 890.35 acres of suburban residential, 235.41 acres of rural, and 18.82 acres of commercial, to 889.08 acres of suburban residential, 240.61 acres of rural, and 18.78 acres of commercial, which will concentrate all areas of commercial master plan designation near the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs Road. And regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 220002, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to adopt a resolution recommending an amendment to the Warm Springs regulatory zone map to reconfigure and adjust regulatory zone on several parcels of land from 867.83 acres of low-density suburban, 235.41 acres of general rural, 18.82 acres of general commercial, 12.29 acres of public semi-public facilities, and 10.24 acres of parks and recreation, to 866.2 acres of low-density suburban, 240.61 acres of general rural, 18.86 acres of general commercial, 12.63 acres of public semi-public facilities, and 10.09 acres of parks and recreation, which will concentrate all areas of commercial regulatory zone near the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs Road, and relocate the public in semi-public facilities and parks and recreation regulatory zones adjacent to Whiskey Springs Road, approximately three-quarter mile east of the intersection of Pyramid Highway. The regulatory zone amendment is subject to the final approval by the Board of County Commissioners of the associated master plan amendment and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by regional planning authorities. If approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to this effect.
Thank you.
Now, I'm exhausted. Now, representing Washoe County is Senior Planner Roger Pelham.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. One moment, Roger, just as normal. I ask Commissioners if there are any ethics or exporte, communications disclosures?
Commissioner Chesney, I just have, I want to make it clear that I live in Palomino Valley, but I have no interest in this project one way or the other. Just, I reside there.
Do you reside in a specific plan area?
No, I do not.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Roger?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. I'd like to begin by apologizing to my boss for that very, very long description. I'm sorry we have to do that. But this amendment really is to relocate the master plan designations and the zoning, the regulatory zones within the specific plan area. I won't read all those numbers again, but essentially those numbers remain the same. They're a little bit different in that we have better mapping now than we did, you know, 30 years ago or so when the specific plan was adopted. So there is a little bit of variation there, but very little. It is located here in the Warm Springs area, essentially at the corner of Whiskey Springs and Pyramid Highway. This is what we're doing. For those of you who remember lava lamps, what we are really doing is-
Sorry.
He's after you.
I'm not sure why that's happening. We're just going to cut everything for a second. I'm going to turn some things down.
Nobody move.
Roger, do you have any electronics on you? I don't know why it's happening now and it didn't happen earlier. Okay, we're going to give it a go.
Hello? Hello?
Okay. Sorry, I think we're good.
So, for those of you who remember lava lamps, okay, am I being- So for those of you who remember lava lamps, okay, am I being? The lava lamp is really demonstrating what we're doing in this case. If you can imagine that the specific plan itself is the little glass bottle, what we're doing is just moving around some of the colors on the map within that specific plan. The specific plan itself is not expanding. The amount of each of the zonings is essentially remaining the same. We are not intensifying. What we're doing is simply moving things around a little bit. We're moving colors on a map. And what we can see here for the master plan is we're moving the two little spots of red and putting them together with the other larger spots of red near the intersection of Whiskey Springs and Pyramid Highway. You can see the little arc there? That's around the big agricultural pivot, okay? So this is an area that, that can be developed without interfering with the existing agricultural use. And likewise, the zoning is doing the same thing. We're taking a couple of little blobs of blue, that's public and semi-public. We're putting them together right up there, just to the north of Whiskey Springs Road, kind of in between the two big agricultural pivots. And again, we're taking all of that commercial and we're putting it there near the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs. What I would like to note is we are actually, no new commercial zoning is going within two-hundred feet of Pyramid Highway. That's part of the area plan. And we're creating a commercial node, which is also part of the area plan. These are goals that are being met by this regulatory zone and master plan amendment. I can really get down into the weeds on all this stuff and we can talk about sort of tenths of acres of here and tenths of acres there that might be a little bit different, but there's really only two master plan policies that are really applicable. They're both being met and those are, again, creating the commercial node and keeping that commercial node off of Pyramid Highway. And they're doing that. The applicant has also had a meeting with Tomwa. This is in preparation for perhaps a project to import treated effluent water out there for use in the agriculture, but that's really not a part of what we're dealing with. They put it on the record, that's why they're doing this, not what we're considering tonight. Kind of talked about this. Public notice was done appropriately. We did have a neighborhood meeting as well and we kind of sat there because no one from the public showed up. But we were there and they had the opportunity. I have not received any calls or mail in support or opposition. Really, I believe that the findings can be made. This is implementing the master plan, again, for both the regulatory zone amendment and the master plan amendment. And really with that, I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant's representative is here also, if you have questions specifically for them.
Does the applicant have any presentation?
Roger, can you just move the mic back, please?
I apologize, does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening, I don't think we need that power panelists. Good evening, for the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. I'd like to thank Roger. I think he did a very, very thorough job in his staff report. In twenty-six years of working with him, that's the first time he's used a lava lamp in his presentation. I would like to also listen to Mike Benjamin with Palomino Farms is here today, the project applicant. This is really, as Roger said, is a consolidation of land uses. It's not necessarily an increase in intensity or, or, you know, impact. If anything, it's maybe just slightly less intense because we are converting some low-density suburban to general rural. I would like to address the comment about the next door poll that was brought up and I think that was probably put up with the very best of intentions to get some, some feedback from the community. However, I think if you read what was posted, it said, are you opposed to new commercial uses along Pyramid Highway? It didn't account for those commercials that are there. I think it should have said, are you opposed to the relocation of commercial uses that exist to Pyramid Highway? So I just would like to make that clarification that may have skewed some of the responses in that poll. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Mike is here too, if you have any questions for him and appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment at this time, either in chambers or on Zoom?
I do, in chambers I have Pam Roberts.
Pam Roberts, for the record. One other factor I'd like the commission to consider, I don't know how relevant it is other than the fact that it was a big deal on February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The subject area was completely underwater from the flooding of Cottonwood Creek. And although we are currently in a drought, we all know how quickly that can change. And so I don't know if at this point we need to address it, but it's certainly something the planning commission needs to think about in the future. We do not want to have another Lemon Valley disaster. In terms of the meeting, the neighborhood meeting, I find it kind of interesting that nobody showed up. I don't know who they sent it to because when Tomwa had several community meetings at the Equestrian Center concerning, that was about the same subject property, concerning the, this water feasibility study, it was very well attended. It was advertised very well, it was very well attended. The applicant, Mr. Benjamin was there and he made a presentation and he talked about how he's planning to use that, take that one-thousand acres that is currently can be made into a little suburb out in the middle of our rural community, that he was planning to make sure that it would stay agricultural in perpetuity. And at that time, he never said anything about this commercial rezoning or relocation. And I just wonder where the inconsistency is about that. But in terms of whether or not a commercial property should be out there, some of the people that did respond to the poll, some were against it, some were in favor. I just think there should be more of an opportunity to get input. And if we need to do a different survey or poll, that is a little bit more specific to Mr. Riley's concern so that they realize that it's a relocation. I don't have any problem with that, but I still think we should have more public input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further public comment in chambers. I do have a hand raised via Zoom. Cindy, I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Cindy Dip. I'm a Warm Springs resident living within a couple of miles of the site. I would like to support Pam Roberts' request to postpone the decision on this agenda item. I would like to say that the next door poll, it did not indicate that it was new construction, but I do agree that it could have been more clear that it was relocating commercial zoning to a strip mall. But this leads to my main point, which is that I believe the neighborhood does not appear to understand the proposal. I'm supporting Pam's request for postponement because I believe that the neighborhood meeting notice poorly conveyed to the residents how this amendment would affect their neighborhood. I found out about this proposal today and was able to take a look through it. And I can say without a doubt that the portion of the proposal that would concern local residents the most is the reconfiguration of the location of the commercial zone. The notice of the neighborhood meeting implies that the primary purpose of the project is to redesignate six-point-eight acres from low-density suburban to general rural. This specific part of the request is totally negligible as the site itself is more than a thousand acres. So changing six-point-eight acres to rural only reduces the amount of houses that can be built by six at most, which is nothing compared to the nine-hundred or so homes that the site's zoning can support. This notice of neighborhood meeting then goes on to say that the proposal to rezone this requests that the commercial land, public semi-public land and parks and recreation land be reconfigured. It's very vague and does not at all indicate that they propose to reconfigure the land to create a strip mall at Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs. And I truly believe that if the residents knew that was the intention, they would have had more qualms and had spoken up. Currently, even though there is a large commercial zone on the southeast side of Pyramid Highway and Whiskey Springs, there are no commercial developments in that area unless you count the Wild Horse Adoption Center. So the strip mall would be the first real commercial development there. The way the word, the way the notice was worded gave the impression that this, this development was about reducing development in the area, which ended up skirting the issue that residents would have taken pause at. And I understand that the amount of land with commercial zoning would stay the same. However, I do believe the residents should have a chance to understand the proposed changes and decide whether or not they prefer the commercial land to be consolidated into a strip mall like the proposal requests or to keep it as it is now, which is a few scattered plots of commercial zones within a few mile radius. It may end up turning out that they do prefer the strip mall over the scattered plots, but I do not believe they were given the chance to come to that decision so far. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I do not have any further hands raised via Zoom.
I will close.
You're good, I'm on.
Hearing nothing more from public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for either questions of staff or the applicant.
Chair Doncheck.
Yes, Vice Chair Chavillcheck.
I guess this would be for staff. We keep hearing reference to a strip mall. Can you provide, elucidate us on that?
Pardon me, for the record, Roger Pellon with Washoe County Planning. No, I'm afraid I really can't. There is no project associated with this request. This request is simply to move the colors on a map. The, the general commercial area is being consolidated into a node near, but at least two-hundred feet back from the intersection of Pyramid and Whiskey Springs.
Thank you.
A project may very well come forward at some indeterminate point in the future for commercial development, but it's likely that that would not require discretionary action.
If I can piggyback also, if you look at Article three-oh-two of the Washoe County Development Code, there are a list, a significant list of uses that are allowed within the commercial designation. A neighborhood commercial center is only one of a large number of uses that could or, or may, may happen on that location.
For the record, that was Secretary Trevor Lloyd.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any further?
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from the commissioners at this time? Hearing none, I will close public hearing and bring it back for discussion within the commission, commissioners or a call for a motion or motions.
Commissioner Doncheck.
Are you on?
Commissioner Chesney.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I'd just like to make a comment that currently this commercial and neighborhood commercial is already approved out there. And we're taking it from being spread out through the area, consolidating it near the highway, which keeps the track of traffic off of a G I D maintained road, Whiskey Springs, and brings it closer to Pyramid Highway. You know, the thought of the water study or waiting for the area plan to be rewritten, this, in my opinion, this has, has, it's not even a thought. I think that this is probably, well, I know it's a good move. Get it out by the highway, get it all in one spot and it'll be controlled when, whenever they bring a project forward. So with that being said, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion.
Chair Doncheck.
Yes, Vice Chair Chavillcheck.
Yes, and just, I know we keep saying this, but it's, is, this is the first step of many in terms of a master plan amendment and a regulatory zone amendment. So we don't have specific plans in front of us. So just putting that on the record.
Do we want to do these together or separately?
Up to you, your discretion.
Okay, we'll do them together. I move that after giving reason, consideration and the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as exhibit A to this staff report to amend the master plan set forth in the master plan amendment, case number W M P A twenty-two dash zero-zero-two, having made at least three of the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, section one-ten-eight-twenty-fifteen, per N D. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in W M P A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two as set forth in the staff report for submission to Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission. Furthermore, the regulatory zone amendment motion. I move that after giving reason, consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as exhibit B, recommending adoption of the regulatory zone amendment, case number W R Z A twenty-two dash zero-zero-two, having made all of the following findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, section one-ten-eight-twenty-one dot fifteen, per N D. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed regulatory zone amendment in W R Z A twenty-two dash zero-zero-two as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Doncheck.
Yes, Commissioner Payton.
For the second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Chair Doncheck. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair Chavillcheck.
I would just, just to put on the record is that I would strongly encourage that the applicant, the applicant's representative maintain transparent conversation with the, with the property owners. I really strongly encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. And before we go, I just want to say thank you to staff for tonight. The presentations were, were excellent. Good detail all around, thank you.
Especially love the lava lamp.
Kind of a witty motion, by the way.
Boy, that took me back years. So at this point, ladies and gentlemen, we move on to item nine, chair and commission items. Is there anything under nine A, future agenda items that you would like?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Secretary.
If I can offer, and this has to do with our two Larrys tonight. By the way, with the motions, was that intentional? The two Larrys did all the motions tonight?
Oh, I, I don't know.
I'd like to introduce you, I'm Larry and that's my other brother Larry.
I do have a, a request for a, an item on the next planning commission. And I would like, as a farewell to both of our, to Larry Chesney and Larry Payton, to, who we will miss greatly, to offer a, to recognize them with resolutions of appreciation at our next meeting. So I inviting you both to attend at least the beginning. I'm not going to put it at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
So commissioners, do we have any other future agenda items at this time? Hearing none, we move on to item nine B, requests for information from staff. Hearing none at this time, we move on to item ten, directors and legal counsels item. So item ten A, report on previous planning commission items. Mr. Lloyd?
I do have two items to report on. On the, at the May tenth B C C meeting, they adopted the amendments to the short-term rental ordinance. And also on that meeting, the B C C denied the master plan and regulatory zone amendments for the Highland Village, uh, master plan and regulatory zone request.
Thank you very much. And then item ten A, Ms. Gussman, do you have any legal information or updates for us this time, ma'am?
You're on. Well, I don't have any legal information or updates, but I know we're doing the formal recognitions next meeting, but I did want to just say thank you, Larry and Larry, for your service since this is your last meeting. I certainly appreciated working with both of you and thank you so much for your service to the Planning Commission. Greatly appreciate both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gussman. Okay, moving right along to item eleven, public comment. Do we have any public comment either in chambers or Zoom at this time?
I do not have any public comment.
Yes, Vice Chair Chavillcheck.
Just to, also to thank both our commissioners, thank you for your service. And I do know that I appreciate and know wholeheartedly that you will continue being active members of your community and maybe not having the, the binds of the commission. of your community and maybe not having the, the binds of the commission to be able to speak more freely. And so I do appreciate, Larry Chesney, I've served with you for a very long time, and I truly appreciate your insight. And Larry Chesney often says that we're on opposite sides of the spectrum and-
Politically.
Politically, yes. And so we have, just fully appreciate. And then Larry, also just your insight that you've brought to the commission. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I have to caveat on that because of, Mr. Chesney, Mr. Ilcheck, my knowledge and learning has grown because of what you've been able to share, and, and, and do it in such a professional manner to help us all grow has been tremendous.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, any other public comment?
I have no public comment.
And then I officially close public comment. Motion for adjournment.
Chesney moved to adjourn.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.